On the order of this meeting in the Warren County School Board, it will Wednesday, June 19th. First item on the agenda is to accept or modify the agenda. Is there a motion?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we modify the agenda to include, under the action agenda, review of July 5th calendar adjustment for the system.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Consent agenda. Is there a motion of consent agenda?
Madam Chairman, I move that we set the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Action agenda, selection of delegate and alternate delegates in the 2019 BSBA Annual Convention. In the past, Mr. Wells has been very gracious to be our delegate and has done a fantastic job. You're willing to do that again?
Madam Chairman, I see. I move for Jim Wells be our delegate in Virginia Association. Excuse me.
And, right, did we do that after this, or?
We could do it together.
Okay. Alternate, were you alternate that last year?
I think I was, but I had to go somewhere.
Yeah. I've been alternate before and I'd be happy to do that again. That's okay with you all?
Yeah.
Okay.
No one's arguing.
No one's going to beat me up in the head for that.
Sir, you have a second.
Okay, for Jim Wells to be delegate and Kathy Bauer to be alternate. Is there a second to that? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Schedule fiscal year planned out meeting or adopt a resolution to authorize a year in payment of bills, Mr. Ballantyne.
Yes, and we ask you this, well, every year, I guess, but July or June 30th is the end of our fiscal year and tonight would be the last payment of bills that you authorize, unless you were to either, one, have a special meeting sometime preferably towards the end of next week, so that anything that's come in since we published this packet and that date, we could accumulate and pay out of this year's budget, which there are costs that have been incurred during this year and should be paid from this budget. So you could either schedule a special meeting, and I just suggested one date of Thursday, the 27th, at 5:00, but you could, you know, go any time of day and any day that week, that's just in there for a placeholder, or you could do, as I think you did last year, and that would be pass a resolution, you're allowed to do that, that would authorize a superintendent to approve that final payment of bills on June 30th, and then we would present them to you somewhat, not somewhat, after the fact, at your July 3rd meeting for you to see and give final approval to, but with the knowledge the superintendent has reviewed them and quite honestly, the checks have already been mailed.
You, there's nothing coming before you that needs any special consideration?
There's nothing out of the routine. It would probably be things like, particularly when you get towards the end of the year, most of the schools have ordered their supplies and things during the year, so there probably will be a few things like that, but utility bills and things like that, they come in, phone bills and fuel bills and things like that primarily. Yeah, I don't know of anything at all that would be coming that would be considered out of the ordinary at this point. And certainly if there is, and if it's, you know, the superintendent feels it's something sensitive, he's probably going to check with you folks anyway before he would authorize something like that. But again, I don't anticipate anything like that that's in the pipeline coming. It would be a surprise to all of us.
Well, I feel comfortable because if Thursday is going to be your next meeting, so that's only three days after the end. We can certainly address anything that we might see in the pack or the register.
Okay with you all?
Yeah. It'd probably be good if you did, doing a form of a motion to adopt the resolution that does authorize that, so we'll have something on record to justify that.
Madam Chairman, I move that the resolution authorize a superintendent to approve the final payment of bills for fiscal year 2018 be adopted as presented.
Second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Right.
Motion carries. Thank you. Approval for purchase of merchandising coolers. Mrs. Fox.
The Child Nutrition Services Department would like to request approval to purchase three merchandising coolers. One is for Warren County High School and two for Skyline High School. The merchandising coolers of both high schools need continuous repairs at the end of their life cycle. We received four quotes for the coolers, three of which met their requirements, and the quotes were received from MTS Equipment, Victor Product Company, Erbs Restaurant Supply and Equipment, and Tri-Mark Food Service Equipment Supply and Design. Tri-Mark Food Service Equipment did not include the required pre-installed security cover with their bid, which we have since received, but their bid still was higher than MTS. Our recommendation would be to purchase the merchandising coolers from MTS Equipment for a total of $26,055, $17,370 for Skyline High School's two coolers, and $8,685 for Warren County High School's cooler, which all include the merchandising cover that keeps them safe.
These are replacements?
Yes. So in the schools who were built, they had them. Skyline High School's actually stopped working quite a long time ago and we've been utilizing coolers that were loaned to us from Pepsi, but they really come to the end of their life as well, and just to increase the merchandising and how it looks and how it functions for the students, we are in need of these.
And these are big garden, here at High School, garden growers and things like that?
And they really actually make the line function much more quickly because they're open, open air, so you just reach in, you don't have to mess with the door, and you just make things go more quickly.
Open air, what do you mean? There's no door?
There's no door?
Yeah. They're just like if you... It doesn't use a lot more energy?
It has an air, it's air-cooled, and then you close that door to save energy between service and then again at the end of the day.
Okay, so it's not open?
Just during service.
Gotcha.
Do we have budgeted for it? We got the word.
There is money available from basically the surplus that was generated this year that we use then retain and use for capital improvements and that's replacements, and this would qualify for that, so yes, there is.
Now, I guess we're talking overall for the whole system, if you think that way. You got two of these or three of these at each school?
Just the high schools.
Just the high schools?
Yes. The elementary schools generally have the kind of the doors and they're usually used by the managers. They don't have nearly as much alacard as the high schools and beverages and things. The middle school, the middle school has a similar version, but they're built into the line and they're cooled from below with a refrigerator-type unit.
Yeah, I think it's a recycling thing, those big boxes.
Yes, and the air kind of flows around to keep everything cool. And they have fruits and vegetables and it also makes it, it makes it really nice for kids, they can see them, they tend to take them more when they're, when they're displayed nicely, and so we put yogurts and fruits and vegetables and waters and any of the sides that we're offering that day.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to move approval be given to purchase three merchandising coolers from MTS Equipment in amount of $26,055.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Skyline High School copier lease agreement, Mr. Brand.
The current lease for the copier at Skyline High School expires January 1st, 2019. After reviewing the available replacement options, it's recommended that the attached DSI copiers, which is on the board docs, replace the existing DSI copiers. This contract was competitively bid through the Association of Educational Purchasing Agencies, and the cost is $2,539 per month with, it's a 36-month lease, and the total contract over three years is $91,000 or $30,468 per year. The current year budget has sufficient funds to cover this cost as the monthly cost of the current copiers are $30,468. This is the exact same amount that they, they had last time too, at, in their 36-month in 2016. So this is also a step in the right direction to get everybody onto the same contract. That's why I'm presenting it, not Mr. Smith or Dr. Smith. So, do you have any questions?
Maintenance is included in this?
Maintenance and paper too. Yeah, so I believe it's unlimited copy, I mean, not paper, ink, not paper, ink. It's unlimited copies and they do have a limitation on the color copies for black and white, they can just print off as many as they want.
And they've been pretty good about, when we've had issues with them getting there?
Yeah, we've been really happy. We have one of their copiers here and it's usually, if there's an issue, it's the day of, they'll have somebody come out and fix it.
Have you just got ours fixed it?
Did you?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Any questions or discussions?
We talked earlier, but just so we try to standardize as best we can, but it'll be good, I think.
Are we getting there, Tim?
We are, we're close. I think one school is still out, the AS Roads still does, they're using Xerox or someone else, so we need to get them on board, and once we can, we can kind of level out when, when that, you know, because everybody's at a different phase, kind of phase them all together, maybe some may have to stretch out, and then some we may just need to end early and start over with them, but it will definitely drive the cost down.
I move that a contract of $1,404, the award to Document Solutions Corporation for the lease of copiers at Skyline High School, and that the superintendent be authorized to sign the leasing agreement.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Title I, Part A, Title II, Part A, Title III, Part A, and Title IV, Part A, federal grant application approval. Mrs. Rudesila is here.
I would like to, Mrs. Rudesila is on 81, I believe, sitting in traffic right now. She was on her way back from Blacksburg today and I think the traffic caught her, so I'm going to go ahead and cover for that. She presented this at our first board meeting this month. These are the annual grant applications that we need to do in order to get the federal funds to run these title programs. So, and it requires us to go through and designate where we're going to be using those funds and what for, and at what level we use them at each of our schools. So, she presented at the first meeting, I didn't know if you have any questions, I'll do my best, even though she's not here.
Yeah, I hadn't had the time at the first meeting to read over everything, and quite frankly, trying to get it read and understand it all is sort of difficult, but it's just amazing how much goes into...
Yeah, it takes a whole team to figure all this stuff out.
It does, it has to.
But when these are approved, then that way we can apply for the funds and that's, we get all these funds from the federal government to run these programs.
But that doesn't totally cover everything.
No, but it covers everything in these titles.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any questions, Rob? All of that.
I'm just trying to walk my way through. I move that the 2019, 2020 Title I, Part A, Title II, Part A, Title III, Part A, and Title IV, Part A grants be approved for submission to the Virginia Department of Education.
So, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Virtual learning program contract, Mr. Fox.
The Apex contract for their learning comprehensive course have come up for one year old for 2019, 2020. This year's contract price is $17,212.50, which is the same price, this is four years running now. This includes a one-day professional onsite training session. This program provides virtual learning classes for students of both diversified minds and brighter futures non-traditional programs. It also provides online classes for students on homebound, as well as both students, as students at both high schools who due to scheduling conflicts or course offerings are unable to participate in an on-campus class. Apex is a VDOE-approved, multi-division, online provider, and we're asking that we approve the contract.
What's the total price with all the taxes and everything? Shouldn't this one be included in?
The total price that I have is $17,212.50.
It says prices do not include any applicable sales or other taxes.
We don't worry for sales, it's in, yeah, right, yeah.
Questions?
Madam Chairman, I move that a contract in the amount of $17,212.50 for the Apex learning be approved for the 2019, 2020 school year.
Second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. July 5th.
A few years ago, we were in the same situation, the cycle of a calendar, where July 5th falls on a Friday, and I think at that time, I think the board agreed to alter our calendar to make July 5th a holiday as well, just to give, you know, families here opportunity to have that long weekend, and nobody's going to argue with you if you want to do that again. And I would say already, I've got quite a number of staff already have taken off that day. I might have poor problems keeping offices overnight, just because of the way...
What should we say, Dave, when you come off?
You could.
Yeah.
Good. I just, I just brought it to you to discuss and see what you thought.
Yeah, I think, I think it's one of those opportunities to provide staff with a little bit of bonus per, or whatever. I mean, it's, again, a lot of our plan of taking that because that's one opportunity to handle a long weekend, dinner, a little bit, any day person. It's changed, you know, they get it without ever using PTO data, so I'm in favor of it.
I put together a quick agenda item, and if you refresh your computer, it'll come up, but you don't need to. I put the proposed motion, if you're so inclined, up on the board, one that we put together pretty quick, so I think it's...
Do we do it for counties?
The county is off that day because it is a state holiday.
So, it's already...
Yeah, it's a state holiday, so all the other, yeah, we just haven't done that.
It's like a real big...
But we don't want that.
I'll, I'll, July.
It'll be working.
Regardless.
And we appreciate that.
Yeah. Yeah, it's no good.
What did you say, the 2000 snow day in Ohio?
I moved that 2019, 2020 calendar be revised to include July 5th, 2019 as a holiday.
Second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Staff will appreciate that.
Motion carries. Yeah, I hear they're doing a happy dance right now.
Yeah. That does... Programs? Nope, someone's doing anything like that, nope. Yeah, they're all on Fridays anyhow, yeah.
Work session, AS Roads renovation update.
All right, I thought just, maybe just spend a few minutes updating on AS Roads. I'm going to reiterate some of what's already been said in the media and to you guys. We know that the bidding process was not successful. The requests for bids were sent to general contractors that we've worked with in the past, and we advertised in our regional newspapers as well. We did have a number of contractors express interest and attend the pre-bid meeting, but we only received one bid, and it was well over the amount of funding we have available. So, we really had no choice but to just put the brakes on. Unfortunately, it was just days before the work was to begin. I mean, the timing was tight, but it would have worked out. Mrs. Shepherd, Mr. Livisay, and myself met with OWPR this week. The first step we need to do is just have a clear idea of why we only received one bid and why it was so much higher than the estimate. They clearly said the estimator that they used, they've used for a long time, and this is just unprecedented, this hasn't happened before. So, they are contacting, and they've already started contacting, all the general contractors that did have interest and to find out why they didn't bid, and so hopefully they will give us honest reasons. And then I've invited OWPR to come to our August 7th board meeting. So what we'll probably do is at that board meeting, once we finish our regular, regular meeting, we'll go into a work session to allow them to sit down and talk with us about what they've learned and a path forward, because I think the intention is to rebid the project, and I think timing is a big part of this, what we've learned already, and they're just, people did not need the work, it just came down to, and I think that's the people that they've already spoken to, the contractors they've already spoken to simply said that, we didn't need the work at this time, and they were fooled, you know, we have so many people working for you. And they also had trouble getting the subs to commit to that kind of, that kind of work. So, we're now looking at how we can give more access to the building, which is a big part of it, and, and I think we've got the beginnings of a plan to do that, and I think this would, this would shorten the build time dramatically and would also potentially lessen the cost, that's the idea, if it doesn't take as much time to do the build, or the renovation, then it would shorten the cost as well. So, that's, that's the plan at this point with AS Roads. In the meantime, we would like to go ahead with the asbestos abatement. That was one of, that was the first thing that we were going to do anyhow. You'll remember as a board, you did approve this part of the project already, it's ready to go. My suggestion is, let's go ahead and do that now. We've been in contact, Mr. Livisay's been in contact with, Livisay's been in contact with the company that was awarded the bid, and they're available to get it done within a few weeks. Is that right? So, the one thing we do need to be aware of, there's two main things that are being abated. One is that there's insulation around some piping in a non, an area that people aren't in, so we're going to do that, there's about 300 feet, I believe.
About 600 feet of piping.
Yeah.
Is that under the building?
And the crawl space.
Crawl space, yeah.
Yes. Just so you know, that crawl space is not part of the building's ventilation system at all. Okay, so it's just dead crawl space. And it's the old steam pipe.
How are you going to be getting under there and doing this?
Yes, it is.
But I'm not doing it. But the second part, and one thing to be aware of, is when they do this, they're also going to be taking up all the floor tile, so that's the other place where there could be some asbestos. So that's going to all be taken up, so what will be left is a clean but bare concrete cement floor, and that will be for the remainder of the project. Talk to the principal, she's as good with, she's good with it, no problem to do that. And you think about some of the places that have bare concrete as their floor.
So it's not going to be nicked and uneven from the removal of the tile?
I can't say, it might be opened up a little porous in spots.
But nothing that would cause a child to trip or...
I can't imagine that. Typically, the older the vintage or the older the building, believe it or not, the more level the slab is. It's what we've seen, but...
And I think if there would be some significantly divots or holes, we could figure out how...
Yeah, that can be leveled out prior to, if there's anything that comes up, yes. It's just we need time for, the lead time for the new flooring material, once the contract is awarded, for that to come in.
I don't, yeah, we don't foresee a big problem with us having cement floors for a period of time until, until the project's completed.
Nothing has to be done with the renovation in tearing up the concrete on the floors or anything like that?
No, none at all.
Okay, so unless I hear something different, we're going to go ahead and move, because you'd already approved that, so we're going to go ahead and move forward and get that done, so...
It has to be done when the kids are in school, it's not something you can do in the early...
Time to go, so we'll do that, and I know the newspapers are going to report that, so that's going to be helpful. Thank you. Secondly, we do need to move forward with the pitched shingle roof part of the building. That is, that was actually one of the main drivers to do this renovation, was that was in very poor condition. So, we, we are looking at how to make that happen as soon as we can. We, our procurement policy is up to date with new state laws and regulations, but our procurement regulation was not. And the reason I bring that to your attention is that the state regulation says that you do not have to do a sealed bid of up to $100,000 on a project, but our regulation says if you hit $50,000, you do. So, I'm going to go forward with making the regulation match the policy, so we're going to be able to go out and get bids, but they don't have to be a sealed bid process to be able to get bids on this project, because we believe it's going to be under $100,000. And this may be an opportunity for a smaller roofing company to be able to be a part of, part of this project as well, whereas before, they were having to do a sealed bid part, and I think that may be intimidating to some of the smaller companies, so...
So what's involved in changing the regulation?
I just do it. It's something that I have the ability to do, because it's changing, just change the, just make you aware that I'm going to do it, I'm just going to change it from $50,000 to $100,000. So, it's, I mean, it's something that, honestly, we should have done when the, when the state law was changed, but we just didn't.
Okay.
So we'll go ahead and get rolling on that, and then I would also like, and what, or I'm hoping as soon as we can to be able to come back to you with a successful bid that we can approve, so hopefully we can do it quickly, we're going to talk tomorrow morning, see how we can get that done. I also would like to just reiterate what's been said about funding. The funding for this, this renovation comes mainly from funds that were left over from the Warren County Middle School project, which I will remind everybody, came in under projected bid, so sometimes it's under, sometimes it's over. So, and there are some documents that I just wanted to show you, do you have enough copies?
Yeah, sure.
It just shows, we're going to put these up on board docs so they'll be available to you, the Virginia SNAP account that we have that holds our dollars, we're just going to show you that we do have money in that account to be able to do this project. And then I would also like to, I think, Rob, you've also run off what we've spent out of this amount so far on the project. So, I know that was a question that we got here about, about the funding, how it all worked.
Expenses.
Yeah. So, as we've worked through this, we thought it'd be good to put that in the public document. Primarily, the expenditures have been on the architect to get the design done, and then using some advertising costs, and some permitting costs, and some testing costs.
All the web?
That's, that's the architect, yeah, and then the Winchester store. Those would be, Uline is, actually, that was what we used to get, provide teachers' boxes to put things in, that they're packing up for the summer, so we still have them.
Yes. Didn't send them back.
Yeah, but we'll keep those, and then WECI is a testing, actually, I think they did the asbestos.
They're the environmental consultant.
Yeah.
Just a second. I got a question, Ms. Shepherd, related to the asbestos, and she says that we have an environmental company inspect the areas which contain asbestos two times each year. For the last nine years, there's been no change in conditions since the asbestos management plan was created in 2010. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. Yeah, and that is an EPA regulation. They, they really break it down into two inspection types, one is periodic, every six month, every six months, and then you have every three-year inspection. The three-year inspection is more, honestly, more comprehensive, but it's based off of the periodic or six-month inspections, and then the condition of all the material is reassessed, and then they would make their recommendations based on their, you know, their assessment of the material. So, we're fortunate that the two types of material, actually, three, vinyl... So we're fortunate that the two types of material, actually, three, vinyl asbestos floor tile, mastic, or the glue, which is considered non-friable. And simply, that's, there's less chance or hardly any chance of anything becoming airborne out of a non-friable material. The pipe insulation, as you could imagine, you know, over time, dry, cracking, stuff like that, has a greater chance of becoming airborne, i.e. friable material. So, yeah, and all the records I've researched since coming on board were in compliance with EPA for that. And Winchester Environmental is the firm that has done those inspections for us, so.
So, and then it's the final, so we're, oh, those are the documents in terms of the finances. I was going to put that in front of everybody. And then just, as a final statement, just prior to going to bid, we just need to have as clear a picture as possible of the estimated costs. So we're going to be working closely with our architect on this. We've looked at several components in the project that we can bid in total as well as separately, so it will be easier for us to maybe make some changes if the bid comes in a little high. And again, I hope to have all of this together for us to review with, with the architects on August 7th. So, and they, a good timeframe is, you know, August, September to go out to bid, because that's when construction companies are starting to look for their winner award. So that's just another timing thing. I think we just, you know, it had some unfortunate timing issues with this. We all hate that it happened, but we could end up, because the, if we can get the more access to the building and have a shorter time, we may end up having the project done in the same time it would have been. So they've already, they've already indicated that if we can give them enough of the building, it's going to take that much less time to get it done. So we could be done by the end of next summer as well. So it could end up just...
Are you thinking about moving classrooms and consolidating?
Outside, yeah, yeah. To maybe getting some learning cottages for a few months, and then getting, using the multipurpose building that we have on site.
Titching off.
Yeah, titching off crigs and classrooms. And there we get, we haven't quite talked through all of it yet, because we want to have a very comprehensive plan before we say exactly what we're going to do. We'll have to figure out what we're doing with PE at that point, because we need a place to have that.
Outside of our own building.
There's a good shovel, snow, whatever it is. But we'll have a good plan. We'll have a plan in place, and I think we'll get it done. At work, no, not at this point.
After work, yeah.
Yeah. And we've looked at some pricing on that. It's not, I think we're in the $75,000 range for 18 months.
18 months.
18 months, if we need. So that would come out of this cost, you know, the work to do, but we'd be able to give them about 75% of the bill upfront, and that seems to be a good deal. That's, that's my report on, on AS Roads.
So Greg, you might have mentioned when I was handing out things and not listening as well. Did you mention that in addition to this money that's shown here in this account, there is proffer money from the, from the county that, that's been collected from different developments that they have earmarked for this also. So there is actually more than the 2.4 million that's sitting here.
How much more?
About $450,000. So, and that original 3.1 included that proffer money that we've said, and we've already, some of the cost had to do with paying the architect.
So you've already spent $175,000 of the 3.1 that roughly that was available.
Right.
And that proffer money is already collected?
Yes. It's also the county coverage.
That's in that seven years. Yes.
So we're still looking at 3.1, we're on the 6.2, and then come back on to 3.1.
Hopefully.
That's the goal. And if we, if we, we're close.
What kind of level of pain do we have on the other 3 million?
I don't have any. I don't have 3 million.
Not yet.
Yeah, it's going to have to be close to that amount, or we will have to do some changes to the project.
Right.
So that's the, that's the reality. We'll move forward, and I think that'll work.
I know you'll do it, and Melody too, so. But working with the teachers and even the students at some point, hey, this is what we're going to have, you know, when it's all over and excitement and...
Right.
Takes a little more time, but we want to get, make sure, get them involved in the same thing.
They were, they were involved in the plan.
Yeah.
And the architect, that would have been several times.
It's a short period of time, you know? It's one of those deals where you probably get it done quicker than you think anyway.
Second reading of the May 2019 BFBS meeting of policy updates.
Okay. Mrs. Shepherd presented these at the first meeting this month, just as a quick look. This is an opportunity, if you had questions, or quite a few policies, you can see if you looked at the comments, recommendations and comments, that a lot of the policy changes reflected code changes in Virginia that were, the one thing that impacts you guys is an additional training that hopefully will end up being online. You don't have to go someplace for it, but that's, that's something that certainly impacts the school board. But if there's any other questions, I'll do my best to answer them now, and if I can't, we will answer them on July 3rd. And these get a crazy.
One thing I didn't understand, what is the electronic room partition?
It says big folding doors. You see the big folding doors that some schools have in, a lot of times in multipurpose rooms that they fold. And a child was, I think...
Fairfax County, what it was.
Was killed a year or so ago, and so this is a result of that.
Yeah.
Fairfax.
I just think it was in there.
Yeah.
And then on the...
Do we have, do we have, honestly, I don't know of schools to be...
High schools? Does the high school have a mechanic? I don't think they're mechanical. I think they're hand. I think they're all, they're all...
Operating, there's a hand between the stone.
That case of a Jim's.
There is, there is a panel that goes, it is there, but I think that...
If it is, we will follow the policy.
Yeah. We can find, we can...
You can find that out very easily.
I just didn't understand what that was in the reading.
No, it's a good question.
Also, are fire drills, are lockdown drills done at the same time, or is it all separate?
No, they're separate. As they come up with new things to do, like vaping, we need to change our policies to address those, so we've done that.
Do we have, this is probably a question from Mrs. Fox. Many kids that do not pay their food, they have a balance on what they owe for the food, and it doesn't get paid. Can we try and walk along on that?
Well, the legislation actually changed, and we're not allowed to have her bad debt anymore, so it would have to be paid by the school at some point. So we've really been working very hard. Part of why we have Katie's position is she works with families to really get those paid down. But one of the really nice things about our community, and it's just been so heartwarming as we, as people have heard about our programs and about that we don't, that we serve every child and that we don't give alternate meals, I've had a lot of organizations reaching out to us and sending us checks. So we have a very, we have a system in place that we can show where that went, so if the organizations would come back and want to see exactly where that went. But as Katie works with families, she's able to determine what we can do best to help them, and sometimes helping pay off some of that account or all of that account is something that we're able to do with that. So churches and just different organizations that just have wanted to help in some way, and it's really been heartwarming and really nice, and helped us also to work with the backpack program as well, so.
How's that going for, I know it's just the startup for the summer, but so far okay?
It's been fantastic. So Monday was our first day, and we actually served 107 on Monday at E. Wilson, and it jumped up to 135 on Tuesday, which was where we ended the summer last year. So that's really great. And then the first day on the van, of course, adding Russi Jeffries program made that number go up significantly. But at the end of last year, we only maybe were serving 20 meals a day, except for on the day we were serving Russi Jeffries. And we started off with 63 on Monday, and today we hit 79. And that was kids coming. We have two new sites, Brinklow and also the church over by 15th Street. And they haven't really taken off just yet, but at the Brinklow community, we've actually had more children each day. And we haven't quite figured out how to get the students over by 15th Street School to, to know that they can come to that church and get meals. But the apartments on Kendrick Lane have really increased and just really, it's doing really well. Tomorrow will be our first day delivering backpacks. So Donald and his team will be there to help us share that.
How many do you have ready to hand down?
We have 100 ready.
Okay.
So now, it's a little bit different. If they are at a program that's in a school, so the Russi Jeffries program and E. Wilson's program, we've asked that they fill out a form to say they want one. We don't want to overwhelm the kind churches and organizations that are providing those backpacks, but every child that comes to one of our sites that the van serves, we'll receive a backpack. So we figured 100 should, should cover us. We can always do more if we continue to get more kids.
Where is that we do that?
We'll do that at all of the sites, including right across from Russi Jeffries, Kendrick Lane, if someone were to come to 15th Street location, up at the Brinklow community. And I'm sorry, I'm so bad, then Royal Hills and Royal Arms will be wherever. So all of those. And then when we get kids that come to Russi from the community, they'll all get those as well.
That's awesome.
And we're all excited to see how that goes. And the kids have been, we added hot food to the menu, and the kids were really excited. On Monday, they got cheeseburgers and a big lure on Thursdays to get their backpacks with chicken pies, which is, since they all love those. And the EDAX, the Virginia Department of Agriculture, gave us an extra $1,000 right before school was out. So we've had fresh strawberries and peaches and plums, and today we had watermelon. And so a lot of great fresh fruits and vegetables, carrots, and I think we're going to have some tomatoes and things that are abundant in summer, but we don't always have the money for, so.
We don't like blueberry cooking today.
Oh, we're having blueberries too.
Yeah.
And they don't always love the consistency of those. We're going to do some raspberries. I love blueberries.
Maybe you need to throw them in a cobbler or something.
We're going to do a berry cobbler. We're going to do strawberries, blueberries. Yeah, if we put them in a cobbler, they wait for those. Thank you for asking.
Thank you. Yeah, I didn't have any milk stuff.
Yeah, if there's anything, please let us know, and then we'll answer it on July 3rd. Yeah, so we just, we'll give you an opportunity to...
And local performance assessment, Mr. Fox.
Beginning with the 2019-2020 incoming freshman class, Warren County Public Schools will use local performance assessments to award an English writing verified credit in place of the standards of learning and, of course, writing test. Students will contribute required writing samples to a portfolio through their high school career to create a body of evidence that will be used to determine if the verified credit has been earned. Warren County Public Schools will award a verified writing credit for the first time during the 2021-2022 school year. The change from state SOL testing to local performance assessments increases the role and responsibility of the division to develop and score the assessments, review the body of evidence, and award the verified credit. Students that are rising into 10th, 11th, and 12th grade during the 2019-2020 school year will continue to take the SOL and, of course, test to earn a verified writing credit. We are in the process of developing the performance assessments. We have created the first, the first prompt. We had a small group to, to create that, and then we've met with English faculty from both high schools to vet and receive their approval. We are drafting a letter home to students and parents to explain them the proposed change. Teachers have been, they've had their first opportunity at training to score the assessments, and that's, that is ongoing with the few people who have to train. Later this week, we are, we'll be working on the second performance assessment, because we'll need to have a practice assessment. We'll need to have a first attempt at the assessment, and then we'll have to have an opportunity to do a retake. So there'll be three in any given year. The, the purpose of this, frankly, is to encourage deeper learning and more balanced assessment and to emphasize the ability to apply what a student has learned as opposed to just sitting down and doing an on-demand writing. And just, this from the DU, Virginia Department of Education. In English writing, a student may verify a course mastery through a locally developed performance-based assessment. Performance assessments require students to apply what they have learned and to provide an opportunity for students to demonstrate that they have acquired critical thinking, creative thinking, communication, collaboration, citizenship skills. They're, they're known through the profile of a Virginia graduate as the five Cs. So this is a move, we, we are not at, at the very head of the package anymore. We had intended to also do it with this year's 10th graders, and we felt like we weren't quite ready. We had had some more guidance from the Department of Education came out in March. And so we decided to slow down and let, lay some more of the groundwork and let some other schools figure out what's on the road box, what's going to be. But we are prepared to start with our incoming freshman class this year.
That's a big change in how we do it. We, teachers have always given prompts and writing things like that, but we're now responsible school division as this goes through to give that verified credit, which that was done by the state before. So we have to do it right. And we are.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
It's a move away, a move away, a shift away from standardized tests to take some of this all by ourselves.
Okay. Any other business?
Smith, how are we doing?
Tell us what you found out. You found out that Skyline High School has one.
Yeah, oh, as far as the petitions, and then I'll update on personnel hiring and those kinds of things as well. Just reminded myself, Bill Cup just sent me a text message. The one in the gymnasium at Skyline High School has a key, a turnkey, so it is electric, and you have to have a turnkey on either side. So there is one there that closes. And then I just, I remembered that in the auditoriums, there are lecture halls at both high schools, and they do have some type of panel or curtain. I can't visualize it right now, but I, I know there, there is on, inside the auditorium. As we walk in, if we turn around to either side, we have lecture halls. And I know that we can close those off, because I have before for some conferences. So those are the ones that I know as far as that are within the school district. Warren's Gymnasium, it has a, it has a wall already that separates the two gyms, because originally, the auxiliary gym was the main gym when it was a junior high school. So there's not a curtain there. There's drop-down curtains in the gymnasiums just to separate the floors for practice, but that's more of something that kind of comes down, and those aren't heavy curtains. So those are ones that I know of there in the schools.
Yeah. To clarify, what, what occurred, maybe you know better than I do, but in Fairfax, it was an elementary school, and the instructor or somebody asked a student to assist him, who's like a fifth grader, he was young.
He was a very old man.
Got in the way of it. So, I mean, high school is, even if it were, it would be...
You would have, you would have someone on either end of that curtain.
If it's door switch, you would, you're right.
On both ends.
On both ends, in order to bring the curtains together.
Okay.
So there would, there's going to be something there.
Make sure that we're following what the policy has us do.
As far as personnel was, we actually increased our vacancies. We're 59 vacancies on licensed personnel. We're about 41 filled, so we're still looking at 18. So...
And that's still below last year.
And that's still below, that's most definitely still below last year by roughly 13 licensed personnel. And principals and committees have been interviewing all last week and this week, and so we're filling positions. There will... Uh, we have some people coming in to visit, uh, some prospective teachers, uh, Friday, uh, some math people. So, uh, that's where we're, that's where we're at at this time. And we'll have some fluctuation of people transferring throughout the division and those type of things. So, possibly that math position could turn into a social studies position, or, or it can turn into an elementary position as far as that matters, as far as once people start leaving.
Any further business? Meeting adjourned.